In order, Mr. Wilder, please say prayer if you would all stand. Jackson, please with the pledge.
Y'all would pray with us. My dear Lord, we want to thank you for another wonderful day in this community. We want to thank you for all the blessings you bestow upon this community, this state, our country. We ask that you look over us this evening. Uh, let us make the right decisions as best we can to consider all parties involved. Uh, we ask that you look after all of our first responders, law enforcement, emergency response people in our fire and rescue as they protect our community, blessings on their families. Uh, we ask that you give everyone that took time out of the week to join us this evening a safe journey home from this meeting. All these things in Jesus's name we ask, amen.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, ever being touched at all.
I'd like to read this before we start the meeting. Like to take a moment to clarify that the planning commission is a recommending body to the claim account of board of commissioners. The decisions made on rezoning at various requests tonight will be forwarded to the commission for final action on August the first, two thousand twenty-three. You wish to address the board of commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Dollar to obtain a request to speak for them. Any request whether public hearing will have a minimum of ten minutes permitted per side for the presentation of opinions, data, and evidence by proponents or opponents of a request. The applicant will be allowed to speak first, and any member of the public may speak after. Either side may cede their time during the hearing if they so desire. Okay. Like a motion for approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, please.
I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by raising your right hands. Need a motion for approval of this agenda.
No moved. Second.
All in favor with your right hands, please. Okay. First item on the agenda is Mr. Butler.
Let us hear his request for several massage operators licenses. We have one is in Harmony LLC at forty-four thirty-four Columbia Road, suite two oh four, on premise only. Advocate was Amy Stalvey. Uh, Moose Make LLC, mobile massage services only. Advocate is Andrew House, administrative location in three thirty-one Patrick Street. Cover Care Massage and Bodywork LLC is mobile massage services only. Advocate is Penelope, uh, Stid, administrative location in Clem- in Lincoln County, excuse me. And Catherine Keaton DBA, Katie Keaton Medical Massage, five four eight Blackburn Drive, and also mobile massage services. All these, uh, MOLs have method requirements of the ordinance, staff recommends approval of all four.
We have motion to approve.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the massage operators license for Wellness and Harmony LLC to provide massage therapy at forty-four thirty-four Columbia Road, suite two oh four, and the other three items.
Have a second?
Second.
Any conversation, anybody want to make any comments? All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Okay. Please Montgomery.
Yes, sir, this is the preliminary plat for Highland Lakes West Section One off William Few Parkway. This shows the location of Highland Lakes West Section One. Uh, it is west of the existing sections of Highland Lakes, kind of at the north end of the, the undeveloped parcel here. And it is currently zoned R two, single family residential. This section of the development includes fifty-three single family lots, uh, with a minimum lot size of ten thousand eight square feet and an average lot size of ten thousand six hundred ninety-three square feet. Other required setbacks in the R two zoning district are fifty-five feet from the center line of the roads and ten feet from the side and rear property lines. Uh, sidewalks and street trees are required on both sides of all of the roads and three point two acres of open spaces provided in this section, including the fifty-foot buffer at the perimeter of the site. And staff is recommending approval.
Comments concerning this?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Highland Lakes West Section One off Lewisville Parkway.
Second.
All in favor signify by raising your right hands. Next is Bird Farmer Estates, Ms. Montgomery.
Yes, sir, this is the preliminary plat for Bird Farmer Estates off Lewisville Road. Shows the location of the property on the west side of Lewisville Road and currently zoned R one, single family residential. Um, that zoning was approved earlier this year with the concept plan approved in, uh, March. The preliminary plat is for fifteen single family residential lots with a minimum lot size of forty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty-two square feet and an average lot size of just over fifty thousand square feet. Uh, this does meet the requirements for the R one district for lots served by septic systems. Uh, the required setbacks are sixty-five feet from the center line of the private road and ten feet from the side property lines. There is a twenty-five foot buffer on the rear of all the lots. Um, the required setback is ten feet from the edge of that buffer. Uh, per the zoning conditions, a buffer with a minimum width of a hundred feet was required on Lewisville Road, and you can see that on the preliminary plat. Uh, the plat also includes the replanting of the buffers on the north and south property lines, as well as the privacy fence, as noted in the approved concept plan. And staff is recommending approval.
Comments concerning this issue? Make a motion for approval or disapproval of Bird Farmer Estates.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Bird Farmer Estates off Lewisville Road.
Second.
All in favor signify with your right hands. The next part of the agenda will be, uh, public hearings. It's starting out with Mr. Douglas.
Uh, yes, sir, this is a, uh, conditional use approval, uh, request for massage at four one five eight Washington Road. Uh, this shows the location, uh, along, uh, on Washington Road across from the club car. Uh, this shows the zoning, and again, this is a conditional use approval, so the zoning district, uh, C two zoning district isn't going to change. It's just this property receives approval for, uh, uh, the opening of a massage business on premise, on premises. Uh, this is an aerial of the property, and again, there, uh, has been a massage business operating out of this location for roughly ten years. However, there's, uh, change in ownership ongoing, and so accompanying that they are making this conditional use approval to bring everything into compliance because the ten-year-old business predated the requirement for conditional approval at of, uh, massage uses. Uh, this is the existing site. This is a plat for the property, and, uh, this is, uh, shows the location on the, um, future development map. Uh, it's along the commercial corridor that, uh, coincides with Washington Road, uh, which allows for commercial zoning, which the property already has in commercial uses. Um, again, uh, there's no residential uses in the nearby vicinity, so, uh, can, uh, massage conditional use accompanying the C two general commercial zoning district is in compliance with the, the future development map. Um, and in due process of, uh, receiving the, the applicant's, uh, paperwork, we, she did demonstrate, uh, an understanding of how to operate the business in this capacity in compliance with all county and statewide regulations. And so staff is recommending approval with the condition, um, that massage, uh, services will only be offered out of one suite on the multi-tenant, uh, out of the multi-tenant building on the premises of this, uh, location.
Anyone here that would like to step forward and speak on behalf of this issue? Anyone here that would like to step forward and to speak against this issue? Not any more comments, do we have a motion to accept or deny?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve file R Z three dash zero seven dash zero one, conditional use for massage at forty-one fifty-eight Washington Road.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by raising your right hands. Okay, the next item is Ms. Montgomery.
Yes, sir, this is a request for a major revision to the existing, uh, planned unit development of Magnolia Valley, um, located for a property located at twenty-four eighty-five Sunflower Drive. This shows the location of the property. It is the amenity area for Magnolia Valley, includes the existing pool. And it is part of the planned unit development, as are the, the properties to the north, south, and west. I mean, see to the east, it is bordered by, um, R two property in Berkeley Hills. It shows the aerial, you can see the existing pool, uh, the original PUD, um, from two thousand nine, twenty-eleven, uh, included the amenity area and included a description of it as including the pool and parking to accommodate five hundred homes. Uh, you can see the amenity area was built out with that pool and parking area, as well as a pavilion, uh, to the rear of the pool. Shows the existing site. And so the twenty-eleven approved plan, again, um, had a very basic, just kind of location of the amenity area. Um, there were not specific standards for development of that, so we'll, we'll be addressing those, uh, with this, uh, review. Uh, the current proposal is to add a playground behind the existing pavilion. Um, in twenty sixteen, the county adopted standards for community recreation areas. Um, these were not in place when Magnolia Valley itself was developed, um, but new facilities, or in this case, the expansion of an existing recreation facility would be required to comply with those. Um, those include a minimum setback of fifty feet for swimming pools, um, and tennis courts. Um, and a minimum setback of twenty-five feet for all other buildings and a minimum twenty-foot wide structural buffer where they're adjacent to residential uses. Um, this amended area is bordered on two sides, um, by residences. Uh, so ordinarily, they would be required the twenty-foot buffer along, uh, the entire property lines here. Uh, the existing site conditions, uh, don't really allow for this. Um, the parking lot is within that buffer, and they do intend to use, you know, the space here to provide access to the playground. So they, they obviously don't want to landscape it and, and make it a buffer as we would ordinarily see in the code. Um, however, the pool and the pavilion are existing, um, so we are proposing some modification of the requirements, um, for the existing section of the amenity area. That would be the parking lot, the pool, and the pavilion, um, to reduce the building setbacks, to basically accommodate the existing location of the pool and pavilion, and to waive the buffer around those areas only. Um, I do want to note there is a privacy fence already along the back of all those residential lots, so there is the structural portion. So essentially what we're waiving is the, the landscaping. Uh, as far as the addition goes for the playground area, um, they are showing the twenty-foot buffer, so they will be meeting the code with the area that is being expanded. Um, so you can see the landscaping around the playground here. Um, the playground is intended to be daylight hours only, it will not have lighting or anything of that nature. And with the buffer, um, should not cause any, uh, additional problems beyond what the existing pool and amenity area, um, potentially could as far as noise. Uh, this is the current existing site, it's currently a vacant spot on the, the property. Um, this would be the area where the playground would be constructed and the, the landscape buffer installed. On the future development map, this is an open space area, it's appropriate for it being an amenity area. It is in the larger picture within the neighborhood's character area and having a, a playground and an amenity in a, a neighborhood is obviously very appropriate. Um, so no concerns with it meeting the future development map here. The staff is recommending approval, um, with the conditions that the building setbacks for the amenity area, um, are twenty-five feet from the right of way and twenty feet from the side and rear property lines. Again, that's a reduction from what's typically required for a recreation area that accommodates the existing buildings on the property. And the condition that the privacy fence shall be maintained along the side property lines and that the requirement for the twenty feet of landscaping with that buffer is waived around the existing pool and parking, um, but will be required around the new playground as shown on the concept plan and as described in the narrative. And that concludes staff recommendation.
Is anyone here that would like to step forward and speak on behalf of this? Take your name and address, please, sir.
Good evening, my name is Matt Forshi. I reside at twenty-two zero four Resort Drive. I am the past president of the Property Owners Association for Magnolia Valley, and I'm representing the applicant tonight at their request. I've got members of the board for the Property Owners Association here, along with other neighbors. This proposal was requested by the neighborhood a number of years ago, and then with a number of issues relating to everything from COVID to cost of materials, we have been a little bit delayed in getting this project moved forward, but, uh, the board has moved forward with this request. Uh, they intend to install the playground as it was described for the neighborhood use only. Uh, this is not for outside use, um, uh, as was stated, would not be lighted. Uh, we, the board, um, sent letters to the neighboring property owners just to get input. Uh, the majority of the input that was received was concerns around noise, uh, so we have tried to ameliorate that with dense buffer requirements here uh, to offset that and keep the active part of the playground as far away from, uh, the northern half is where we receive most of the noise complaint concerns from. So have tried to push the active playground component as far to the south of that as possible. Oh, we're here to answer any questions, uh, as well, the board members are here also, so thank you very much for your consideration.
About to have any questions? Thank you, sir. Is anyone here that would like to step forward and speak against this issue? All non-servants, I'd like a motion to accept or deny.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to recommend R Z twenty-three zero seven dash zero two, major pub revision to add a playground at twenty-four eighty-five Sunflower Drive.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by raising your right hands. Unanimous. Okay, next item is history.
Thank you, sir, this is a master sign plan request. Location is five thousand Wrightsboro Road on ninety-three point six two acres. The current zoning is M two for general industrial and the owner is, uh, Georgia Iron Works. Here is the location and the aerial, just shows the parcel that is just on the edge of the city of growth. The M two zoning, uh, for the property and then several properties on the other side of Wrightsboro Road are also M two. Several of the R one properties and next to this parcel are also owned by G I W. There's a Google Earth view to show the, uh, property. And a photograph of the existing site, this is gate one, which is the main entrance for, um, all the visitors and, uh, people to the main buildings. And this, this photograph shows the, both of the gates, gate one and gate two, gate one for employees and visitors, and gate two is, uh, basically for deliveries. And a photo of, um, uh, delivery. Um, this is a close-up of the aerial, it shows the two driveways on Wrightsboro Road. You've got gate one here, gate two here, and the signs are proposed as part of the beautification on Wrightsboro Road. There's a close-up of, of the, that area there. Um, there is a beautification with the, uh, metal railing that's, uh, on, like a curved design al- along, along the frontages. Um, the two signs on either side of each driveway, uh, gate one here will have the G I W and the K S B sign. The second one here will say shipping and receiving. The third element is the sign in the center, which is the freestanding sign. So the county code lists industrial buildings up to, um, hun- hundreds, thousands square feet. G I W is actually an extensive development with approximately three times that in square, square footage for the buildings. So the sign code doesn't really, um, consider industrial uses of that size. The signs that are proposed do meet the building height. There is a, a slight increase in the sign face area and the number of signage. Um, so these two signs are identical, they're on either side of the, the entrance for the visitors and the employees. And these two are for the shipping and receiving. So with this type of industrial facility where there's a lot of, uh, large trucks also, um, entering this, these driveways, we want to have good signage so they know exactly where to go and don't cause any traffic issues. Um, the signs are, uh, designed well with natural stone and cotton steel metal and fit in nicely with the, uh, beautification of the, uh, main road. Also with the five signs being over, um, located over five hundred feet of the frontage, staff doesn't have any concerns with the visual impact and staff is recommending approval.
Is anyone here that would like to step forward and speak on behalf of this issue? You would come to the microphone, state your name and address, please.
My name is Elizabeth McGee. I'm with Chita Fletcher Scott Architects at four twenty and a half Eighth Street, Augusta, Georgia, three oh nine oh four, uh, three oh nine oh one.
You're representing there?
Yes, sir.
Questions for this lady? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is anyone here that would like to speak against this issue? Why is being so nice tonight? Any more questions up here? I'd have a motion to accept or deny.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval of R Z twenty-three zero seven dash zero three, master sign plan for G I W located at five thousand Wrightsboro Road.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, the next item is Mr. Butler.
Let us hear his request for a, a rezoning, bit of an interesting one. Uh, it's going from, there's no tax map and parcel, uh, no zoning either, uh, intersection of Baston Road and Washington Road, about a hundred square feet of property within the existing CSX, uh, rail- railroad right of way. Rezoning S one special for proposed wireless telecommunications co-location. There's a location on the property here, this little star right there. There's a one eight four on there because that's where there, there's existing antenna that we'll be talking about here in a minute. Uh, zoning of, of the area, generally C two, desperate C three across the street over here. Airview of the site. Existing site, so this is a towering question this evening, um, kind of how we got here. Um, CSX basically doesn't have to comply with zoning, to be really blunt and short about it. Um, however, they, they, they did have to get building permits. Um, about a year and a half ago, uh, there was a request to build a tower on this site for the use of CSX. I went through some design, added some tower, or had some, uh, antennas on it that weren't for CSX, those were removed. It was permitted, um, it was built, um, and then request came back in to co-locate towers on it. Um, and that's kind of how, how we got here today, o- overall, um, in terms of that. Again, really small site, we're only rezoning, if you'll go to the next slide. Uh, the lease area here, about a hundred square feet in total, uh, this is being looked at with this request. And again, it shows the proposed co-locations, hundred and ten foot high tower, again, already existing, uh, the proposed co-locations right here at about a hundred and five feet. The CSX towers, or CSX, um, antennas are there on the site itself, on the antenna itself. In terms of the proposed site, in terms of the proposed site, you have some additional equipment that will be added on the ground, pretty typical for a, a cell tower site. You know, we've seen, you'll see one of these a year or so, uh, but again, pretty typical for that. Again, we'll be landscaping, there will be install with this. And then in terms of propagation, again, with, with any kind of antenna, we want to know what's going to happen with the, the propagation maps. You know, what happens if it's there and if it isn't, again, pretty clearly here, if it's with the, uh, the tower, pretty good, um, pretty good coverage. Without the tower, you know, it's not as good. It's still good according to this, but it's good marginal. Then you also have this, the other tower, so again, we're looking at two towers here, because there is a tower that will probably lose a few things. And then this one shows here, again, with tower and without, um, so again, pretty clearly there is a benefit for the tower itself. Um, so due to all those factors, actually, let me talk real quick about future development map. This is within a mixed-use activity center, uh, this will have people within it that do need to have coverage, uh, to be able to connect business, you know, travel, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, there is already a tower here, uh, but again, uh, meets the intent of the, uh, future land use map. Overall, uh, the staff has recommended approval of the request for rezoning S one for the proposed wireless telecommunications co-location. Staff recommendation.
Anyone here who would like to step forward on behalf of this issue?
Uh, yes, my name is Patton Hahn from Baker Donaldson, address is nineteen oh one Sixth Avenue North, Birmingham. The reason for eight, and also with me tonight is Jason Grossglose of City Switch, company that helps AT&amp;T with its locations, and Stan Shepherd from AT&amp;T. Um, we don't have much more to add, Mr. Butler has given a very exhaustive report of this, and I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
But part of this, when they brought this originally to be built, proved to having that?
No.
It's, I, I don't know how true this is, but it's been my understanding that AT&amp;T was going to make an effort take some of their here, for lack of a better term, off of the tower, some of the towers their own quest for property and buy their own tower. Truth to that.
Mr. Shepherd can probably speak exactly to that, but this tower.
Shepherd, stand up and come here, we need to come with you. Get this straight before we go any further.
Mr. Chairman, Stan Shepherd with AT&amp;T, um, located at three six six Farmington Drive here in Evans, Georgia. So, can you please restate your question one more time, Mr. Shepherd?
I was told that AT&amp;T is attempting to, or planning on, taking some of their equipment off of existing towers, trying to buy and put their own towers close to the same location.
So by common practice, we are still not buying our own towers and erecting them. We are still looking for third parties so that we would be tenants on those towers. Uh, you are correct in the fact that we are located on a tower near there that is toward the end of its lease agreement, and the lease factor has gone up so much, we can no longer afford to stay on that tower. So we have already provided a notice that we are coming off of that tower, and we are trying to make sure that we maintain coverage and capacity in that area because that is an important for AT&amp;T as a carrier.
But there's really no truth to the fact that you may mass try to change your equipment to your own towers.
We are not in the process of, of erecting our own towers right now as a general rule, no, sir.
Thank you for answering that question for me, sir. Any other questions? Anybody got any comment? Thank you both. If anybody else would like to address this issue? Like a motion to accept or deny?
Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval of R Z twenty-three dash zero seven dash zero four, zoning a portion of the CSX Railroad off Baston Road S one for proposed co-location on an existing monopole tower.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, sir.
Second.
Have a second, excuse me. Getting ahead of myself.
We, we wouldn't let you do that.
Okay, now, all those in favor signify by raising your right hands. Opposed? Okay. Um, next item on the agenda, Mr. Butler.
Let us hear his request for a variance on the same site. Uh, this is, again, we've already seen it before, but again, it's a variance, section eighteen, that's three twelve, lot size and setbacks, reduced building setbacks for an existing monopole tower. Shows the location, again, that we were just looking at, again, off of Baston Road and Washington Road. Again, current zoning, C two, and then some C three around it, aerial view of the site itself. Existing site. And again, showing more of the site itself to kind of give, to give you an idea. So again, like I discussed before, uh, CSX is having to comply with zoning regulations, which means building setbacks, for instance. Uh, so this tower is actually built about four feet off the property line. Uh, if this were to be built as a normal cell tower, you'd be looking at a setback equal to the height of the tower, which would be a hundred and ten feet. Uh, pretty much impossible to do on this site anyway, uh, but again, just to give you an idea, that's kind of what we're dealing with in this situation. Again, it was permitted, um, it is safe, and again, it's monopoles, it's out of basic collapse in itself, if something does happen. Uh, so again, it wasn't permitted unsafely, uh, but that does kind of factor into the, our, our recommendation on this issue. Um, again, showing with the actual, um, site plan itself, on the next one, again, showing about four feet off the property line there. And again, we've already seen, you know, what the proposal is, uh, for the tower itself. And due to all those factors, again, the biggest one being that it is safe at that location, um, and also with the, the fact of the, the property itself, you really couldn't meet that setback anyway, no matter where you put it. Uh, staff recommends approval of the request.
Anyone like to step forward and speak for this issue?
Yeah, Matt, my name is Patton Hahn, Baker Donaldson, nineteen oh one Sixth Avenue North. Happy to answer any questions, um, again, as Mr. Butler said, you know, this is safe and it is a safe application.
Questions? One like to speak against this issue? I'd have a motion to accept or deny.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve file V A, recommend approval of file V A two three zero seven zero one, variance to reduce required setback for existing monopole tower located on the CSX right of way off Baston Road.
Second.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hands. All opposed, by raising your right hand. How it fails. Any other comments, uh, items, Mr. Sterling?
Uh, um, public comments and.
Sir.
And if any public comments or otherwise, we'll. Happy to listen to you.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Just second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming.